Welcome to the Town of Bolton Board of Selectmen meeting Tuesday, May 6, 2025, 6:31 PM. At the town hall and Zoom, I'd like to call this meeting to order and we'd like to do the pledge first. If you can stand it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Number three on the list is public comment. Is there anybody in the public who would like to make a comment? Yes.
Barbara Modio, Volpe Road. So I'm here for Bike Walk Bolton. Just want you to know that this is National Bike Safety Month. And so as part of Bike Safety Month, we have built in the showcase at the Bolton Library. And our focus is not just on biking. We also chose walking. A big part of our display is on walking. And one of our components is there's a survey there that we're asking people to fill out. And we hope maybe we can use the information later. If we go into complete streets, we'll have some information, excuse me, to use. But if people fill it out, we're also asking them to take a safety vest and encouraging them, please, when you walk around town to wear one.
Thank you.
We bought them, we paid for them. And I don't care if they don't fill out the survey, I mean, we want them to. But more importantly, we'd like to see them wearing the vest when they're walking around our streets. So that's.
Who provided the vest?
Bike Walk Bolton, yeah. And we'll get more if we need them, so.
Are those available?
They're at the library.
Yeah, thank you.
As is, there's an interactive bulletin board where people can put a dot on it to say where they live. And then trace where they, where they'd like to be able to walk to and bike to, but it's difficult, you know. So then we have some information that we can share later, you know, with the town if we do look at complete streets and, you know, where we can go with that, excuse me. And the other thing that we have is the Safe, Safer Roads Driving Pledge. So we're asking people to fill out the pledge and the pledge basically has six components. And the first one is to stay focused while you're driving, avoid distracted driving. The second one is the one I have the hardest time with, and you probably do too, is drive the speed limit. Now, what I have a hard time with is driving 25 miles per hour. It's hard. So I really have to concentrate. And the more I learned, and the more I learned about the, the risk to vulnerable users, if we're going over that speed by a little bit more, we're, we're at, at risk for killing a few more people or seriously injuring them. So drive the speed limit is something we're asking them to do. Yield to pedestrians and crosswalks. Pedestrians, a crosswalk is considered anywhere, you know what, now I can't even think of where there's a crosswalk or, I'm sorry, I forgot the other field for where they are, but it's not just where there's a painted crosswalk, but if there's an intersection, is it crosswalk? Stop at, stop signs and red lights. So I'm pretty good at that. I don't have a problem with that. Maintain a safe distance between my car and the car in front of me. And respect the rights of pedestrians and cyclists. So you should leave, if you're passing them, you should try to leave a three foot distance and, and slow down, just like you would the people on the highway. So I brought pledges if you people might like to sign them. And we're just asking you if you, if you fill it out, leave it in your house to remind you of what you have signed on to. I'll just give it to you and pass it over. However, we also have this in the library. So if you want to put your name on this, I'll bring it back and put it in the library. If, if our board members show that they've signed the pledge, maybe other people will be more comfortable doing it. You're not comfortable doing that tonight. This will be in the library. We can go back and sign it, but, you know, pass it down. I'll bring it back to the library tonight. And I think that's it. Do you have any questions?
Can we sign it with exemptions?
Right, that's right, that's right. Not sure with the exemption.
Could I get her name and address again, please? Barbara?
Modio, 50 Volpe Road.
How do you spell your last name?
A M O D I O.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, is there any other public comment? Anybody online? There's nobody here.
I was supposed to for a moment to open the agenda for, and just create an item number five. We actually consider on the Heritage Trail, Heritage Town Trail.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Is there a discussion? All in favor? Aye. That's unanimous yes vote. That would be five D. Okay, moving on to a presentation from Amplify by Brittany Whitley. Did I say that right? She wasn't paying attention. I must have been. I keep getting away with it.
Hi, everyone. So my name is Brittany Whitley. I'm from Amplify, which is a behavioral health action organization. We are Region Four in the state of Connecticut. We serve the north central part of the state. Bolton sits in there, so there's 38 towns that we serve. I'm actually working on a grant through the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, and it's called the Partnership for Success. And Bolton is one of the towns that has been identified by Demos because we don't have a local, well, we do now, but we didn't have a local prevention council. Ashley and Pam Phillips were getting it off the ground when I kind of came in in my role. So we're here. Ashley's going to talk about what we've been doing in the local prevention council in the last year or so. So, yeah.
Yeah, so Ashley's our chair.
So my name is Ashley Pereira. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a lifelong Bolton resident. I was born and raised here and I'm still here. So I really value the community that we are in. I have children in the school district now, so I've really come full circle of having grown up through the district. Heavens, Ashley Heavens, for those of you who knew me in that. My name is Bolton, probably familiar, because my husband's in the department and everybody knows him too. But so like I said, I've kind of come full circle in recognizing that I went through the school district and now I have my daughter and Adam, soon to be my son too. By training, I'm a licensed clinical psychologist, so I oversee National Hospital out of Mansfield. I'm the clinical director there. So we provide inpatient psychiatric treatment for pediatric adolescents and adults who may be experiencing mental health and substance use concerns that require the highest level of care. So when Pam, my late aunt, came to me and said, there isn't a representative in the Bolton community who's doing this work already, I would really like to get it off the ground, would you help me? The obvious answer was yes, absolutely. I do the work every day. It's in the town that I live in and have a lot of passion for, so it made total sense. Unfortunately, we lost her about a year ago, and so I've continued that work forward in partnership with Amplify. And we're in the state right now of really wanting to grow and continue to engage the public in the town as much as possible. I want to give a shout out to the district already and the school system. We've had a really excellent partnership with them already, as well as the town. And that's made this work possible. We would not be able to do it without Jim signing off on all of the different brands that we're doing. Our engagement with Chris and Heck is the superintendent. I've already been in contact with the new superintendent. So as he comes in, he's already, he is coming to our event next in two weeks, so he'll be there for that. So he's already diving right in, which we greatly appreciate, and we have really strong partnership with Beth Goldsneider in her role, as well as the two principals. So that's been integral, recognizing that, yes, mental health and substance use is for everybody and our focus is on the full age range. But for many, the priority for that really is our youth. And so recognizing again that mental health and substance use touches everybody, it can sometimes be difficult for people to acknowledge it's in our homes. And it's very difficult, especially in towns like Bolton where we want to come off a certain way and have a really privileged group of people who have all these different access to resources, any amount of resources, finances, it doesn't matter, it will touch us in some way. So it's really important that even in districts like ours, where we seem to do fairly well from day to day, that we have these resources available. So again, the town has been fantastic in partnering with that already. We have three active grants right now. So the one that Brittany's partnering with us on Amplify is particularly around reducing alcohol use in youth. That's a five-year grant and has three different towns involved in it. So we're doing a ton of different work in that in the school districts. The other two that we have, we have right now is one for opiate use. Those are opioid settlement dollars with the state that have been issued to us. So that covers the full age range. We're doing a number of different projects in relation to that. Our event at Shar House on the 22nd is an example of that. So it's meant to be a come learn, come just check us out, have a conversation with us, tell us what you think the needs are in town. But those dollars that are funding that event is coming through that state opiate relief fund. The third grant is our LPC grant, so the Local Prevention Council or Coalition Grant, that's also issued through Amplify under the Demos. That's the state's dedication to supporting coalitions like ours and making sure that we can continue to do this work. There will likely be many other grant opportunities that have come up, and that's where our ask always is, in getting that support from the town and from the schools, because we often have to make sure that we get letters of dedication or commitment from the different sectors of town to be able to continue getting that work done. So our main focus is just making sure that we're viewed as a resource, never as a burden or something else that you're being asked to do. So if there's areas that you see that there is a need, we want to hear about that, so we can really dedicate those funds and those grant applications to the specific areas where we see the need in Bolton. We did a survey last year, surveying our youth in grades six through 12. We had the highest level of participation of any history of that, of that survey being done in our schools. And again, that's a direct reflection of the partnership that the administration in those schools have with our students and getting that completed up. Was it a 92% response rate? Which is massive for anyone who's ever done a survey.
Yeah.
So we got incredible data from that. We were able to present that to the high school teachers and talk a bit about how we can engage with that. We're in the process now of setting up a youth group particularly related to this, which is a great opportunity to engage youth in understanding what the needs are in their own areas, give them a voice, and also some leadership opportunities around how to engage in these sorts of conversations and advocacy work. And this upcoming, probably in the next few months or so, we'll be rolling out the adult version of that same survey to get, again, what's the feedback of where's the area in need for parents and those who have youth in our districts, but also for people who don't have kids. We don't ever want to exclude that section of our town that we have, you know, just adults who have chosen not to have kids, kids who have aged out of the school district but are still a part of our community. Again, mental health and substance use struggles are everywhere. And we never want to exclude that population too. So our plans with that survey data would be to look similarly at where the biggest pockets of opportunity are and where we can then focus our energy in relation to that. So our biggest goal incoming tonight is to show you, A, who we are, what we're focused on, invite you to our event in a couple of weeks. And then the other handout that Brittany provided to you, just those through some of the things that we've done already. Obviously, as our bandwidth grows, we'll be able to do even more. So if you are interested or you have folks in your own areas who may be interested in joining, we would love to have you. Just have monthly meetings. It's on Zoom Thursdays at 10 o'clock, first Thursday of the month, so fairly, fairly low commitment. You'll see us at like the concert series in town this summer. Any event that y'all are having, we want to be there for it. So if there's additional events, just let us know and we'll be happy to set up a table for them. Questions or other things? Yes.
You have several grants coming in. Are, so I have a better understanding. I know you're, the interface and all that that's going on. But does it include, you know, resourcing out for treatment or any of that? Or is it, or is this prior to preliminary, preliminary before you go beyond?
Call the prevention council so that they can catch it ahead of time. So in, in the realm that we can't fund somebody's specific treatment, but what we can do is provide them with resources of where you can get help. I do that every day. So if there's folks who need additional guidance, our system is very overwhelming and very broken. Everybody who works in that whole group says that. So if there's ways that we can help navigate that system with people, we're happy to do it.
That's my, my thought is, you know, you don't have to treat, treat the disease, you could get it before.
Yeah, that is always a pill, and we want to be there for every step of that journey. And folks are, you know, at the very beginning stages and no active use, so we want to keep it that way versus people who are actively struggling, who need help, and those who are in recovery to be able to sustain that.
I have two questions. Are you able to share the survey results with us? And then do we have data on number of opioid overdoses in town?
So that data can get pulled from the state website. I don't have it readily available now, but it's certainly a follow-up that I can deliver. Luckily, we have fairly low numbers, which they certainly are occurring. So examples of work we've done around that, that falls in that realm of for people who are in an active state of use, is giving leave behind kits to the fire department. So anytime they go to a call where there is concerns around substance use, we can leave them with supplies, harm reduction models, so things like Narcan, fentanyl, pep strips, safe use supplies and resources of where to get help if they're considering asking for that at this point and want to be able to do that safely.
You also provided training to a number of town staff, I think around a dozen or so. They've got Narcan training and were given supplies to be able to help and intervene in the case of an incident.
And we're able to do that anywhere, anytime. So I actually have another one scheduled for somebody in town who works at an optometry practice out of town. But it's somebody who's interested in having it delivered there, so we're going to be doing that. I'm also certified for suicide prevention training, and I can do that in partnership with Narcan training or separate. But given the backgrounds that we have, we have a number of different trainings or just, you know, conversations that we can have and offer to anybody. That's part of one of our deliverables on our opioid settlement fund grant is to provide Narcan training. So you guys will see more of those.
Oh, I just, I was just going to ask. So if listening or watching, you'd be interested in trying to assist in any way, how would they, who would they contact with the process?
Yeah, so on the handouts that we gave, there's our general email address is at the bottom there. So it's boltonpreventioncouncil@gmail.com. We're also on Facebook and Instagram. Our website will be going live very shortly. So any of those methods would be more than fine. People who know me personally, feel free to reach out to me too. It is also on the Amplify website with my contact information. The QR code will take you to our Facebook page right now, because like our website isn't up yet, it's in the process. So, but you can find information there and our email address is linked to that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
And the town currently serves as your fiduciary, right?
Have you reached out to a number of the businesses in town? We have a couple of international businesses as well as the restaurants that are very popular. To talk to the owners, to offer kits and that kind of thing?
That is on our list, actually. The deliverable and our, our opiate-based grant right now is actually partnership with local healthcare organizations. So the vet practices, the dentists, the doctors that are in town around recognizing the importance of utilizing the methods that are there for reporting when folks are being prescribed medications that are, you know, potentially addictive. Incredibly important. Phase two is also looking at things like businesses. And the alcohol-based grant is also talking about educating, like how not to over-serve at a restaurant, how to have conversations to cut people off, but not in a way that's going to create conflict, being able to provide educational opportunities there, encouraging them. Would you be comfortable putting up a poster of like, are you struggling with alcohol consumption? It's a really hard thing to do in a restaurant business because it's all money-based, right? But there's ways to have those conversations and encourage, even if it's just having a flyer up in the bathroom. Little things that just keep people in mind of it's okay to, to use these substances safely. Educating on why, like, yes, cannabis is now legal. That's caused a whole number of issues for us. But it's legal for adults over a certain age for a certain reason. Do you understand the reasons why that's the case? And if you are struggling with overuse, how to get help around that. So partnering with businesses is a huge part of this because we're only a couple of voices. But if we can get more folks on board who are in our community doing different things and keep those conversations alive in a bit of a different way.
And then we thought about reaching out to the Boy Scouts and other.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so to piggyback up what Ashley's saying and to also answer your question. Myself, and we also have a youth peer advocate, his name is Ben, he's going to stay on. She can just find that out because there was something going on like with funding, but we're able to keep them, which is great. And he is also working on the grant too. So what we plan to do is on the 20th, we're actually going to come out to town and go to businesses and hand out flyers just to start to have that conversation, like Ashley was saying, it's really phase two of what we're doing and the way that we've kind of structured what we're going to do first with the deliverables. So that's one of our plans as well. So I'm glad you brought that up. And Simon and I actually gave us a donation of $500 when we first started, which was really, really cool and really generous. So we'll probably reach out to them again and just kind of update them on what we've been doing.
They're good community partners.
Yeah, yeah, so. And partnering with anything that's currently existing, again, it's a great way to just add on to something that's already around town and already has it. But we were at the Yankee Street Fair last year. We're registered to be at that again this year. Like I mentioned, the summer concert series.
We're going to Kids' Park Side.
Yeah, we're doing that. We sponsored the egg hunt recently, so we gave eggs and they had like our tattoos and stickers inside and things.
Brought some for you guys.
And then also sponsoring things like Project Graduation, recognition. The whole point of Project Graduation is around a safe substance-free night for our teens to be able to celebrate their graduation. And so we're the perfect opportunity to sponsor that, given, again, we have the funds available to do that, to provide additional resources for them and to really support their mission of a substance-free evening for them. And we just brought a speaker in too, Jared Buchanan. He came in to talk about mental health, which is great, to the kids. We did like a three-part series. We have the last one coming up in a few weeks. And he lost his dad by suicide, unfortunately, when he was younger. And his connection with the kids has just been like phenomenal. So they come down in the morning, it's the ninth grade class, and he talks to them for about 25 minutes and then leaves a little bit of time for Q and A. And really what it, he talks about is the pain that he dealt with, with losing his father. He has turned that into doing ultra running, which is crazy. He just did a 308 mile run in Arizona. So the kids are kind of just like blown away and just, he talks about how like you've got to find something that you can, you know, have an outlet for your pain. So it's a really good message and he's been wonderful. He's been a great partner to work with, so.
Very good. Any other comments, questions? I think you should go to the package store, see if you get, get them to double the deposit to Amplify.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Interested, please feel free to reach out. Yes, they're out. These are the tattoos too, and then we brought, I brought you guys some stickers too, just so if you guys want one, so. You guys want to pass those?
Thank you.
I think any extras, you can just even just give them to.
Kids?
Yeah, you can give those to kids. They're fun. They're waterless, which is nice. Don't have to use water.
Our kids have real ones.
Oh, and these are flashlights that we give out to kids, so I brought you guys one too, but it says Bolton High School on it, but they're little, they love swag, so I figured I'd bring you guys some.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Don't feel like you have to stay up at 11:00.
Probably be listening at home if I was, yeah.
Number five, Unincognito Business. Susan Shippe requests for streetlight at intersection of Bolton Center Road and Old Bolton Road. I think we had looked at the cost of that.
Can you explain that document?
So the one, the one thing that we don't have is the installation costs. We're still waiting to get that from Eversource. As you know, we collected some data from, Suzanne was able to provide us with some information from some of the residents and you reached out to others.
Yeah.
And the information that we've gotten has been positive feedback. We've not gotten any negative feedback. The, the comment that we got was they thought that we should make it the same intensity as the other streetlights along the road and just not too bright. So as soon as we get the information back from Eversource with regard to the, the cost, which I don't, I don't think is going to be astronomical, you know, probably, my guess is probably a couple thousand dollars. We could potentially move forward with the installation of the streetlight.
Right, okay. Yes.
What budget would this come out of?
On a streetlight, don't we, is that an election?
Well, we, right, right now, the monthly charges come out of this, the, come out of our electricity budget.
And we have, have we looked into a grant for it? Is there anything from Eversource that they, they have a?
I haven't seen anything that would.
They have an arm that is a foundation?
I have not looked at any grants, but what I've seen, I haven't connected with this particular project. I can certainly, I can certainly mix more.
Google, down the end.
Consultant, found consultant. Did you meet up to him?
No.
It's, it's for. But we, we have, we have.
And but, about the foundation?
Not about the foundation, no. Yes, I'm happy to do that.
Can you explain which costs on this really long convoluted document applied?
Well, really, it really depends on what light fixture we choose, right?
I'm assuming we're looking at the limited.
So we would be looking at LED.
Yep, overhead monthly charge.
Probably the 28 watt.
Yes.
Where does it say watt?
It's seen the LED on the bottom.
Yeah.
To follow.
So which page?
Second column.
Oh, so the first one?
First, first page?
Yep.
2,500 lumens, 28 watt. That's what the rest of our lamps, our lights are?
Tim, is that what you think they are?
I don't know. I'm sorry.
That's also a question that we have to have resources. What do we have existing? And we haven't gotten that response yet.
But color is one thing that you can tell by looking at it, but the lumens is really the actual brightness. When people say it's bright, that's usually they mean the color, which is, of course, is the Kelvin. But the actual brightness, the lumens, would have to be a label that you, that you look at or.
We have yellow, right?
A specification.
I can't, it would be over the 92. It, that's a pretty bright light, yeah.
And it also says mounted on an existing distribution supply pole with existing secondary distribution. We don't have it exist, oh, we do have a pole there?
It's a pole there.
Okay.
That's just where the, with the existing transformers, wires all sit.
We think less than $10 a month, essentially.
Well, no. Overhead monthly charge, underground monthly charge. Yeah, yep.
Okay. I'm sorry, what did you say, Sam?
I was looking at a different price.
Issues on the.
Sam, is this information just stuff that you dug up on your own?
No, this is information that was sent to us by Eversource.
Oh.
Based on our request for information.
Is that a general request or is it like, like Pam said, like a representative that's assigned to Bolton?
We reached out through our contact at Eversource.
Okay.
And this is the information that was provided. It doesn't give me enough information, so we reached back out and said, hey, we want to know what the cost of installation is, and we haven't gotten that response yet.
Okay. Um, do we, we lease our streetlights, eh? Surprised I wouldn't just install it.
So we, I think we, I don't know, Bob, maybe you remember this because you were on the board back then. I, we, we had some sort of arrangement with Eversource because we cut everything over from metal halide to LED, maybe 15 years ago.
Yeah, it was like a.
But I, I want to say I, I, we don't own that. Because anytime there's a repair necessary, they come out and make the repairs.
They service it.
So I, I, I think that we, I think you're right. I think we don't own that.
But we don't know until they respond.
We don't know until they respond.
But that might be a situation where there might be less of an upfront, they might.
Right, it might be that as long as, you know, they put it up and we pay the monthly charges, there may be no cost to installation.
Yep, got it.
Even if we paid for it, we don't want to maintain.
We don't have the equipment to maintain, right?
We don't want. When we transitioned, there was an adjustment cost because there was significant savings in the electrical bill. That, that, it, I think we, we worked out it was over a two-year.
Right, you, you paid some toward the installation.
Exactly. We paid a portion towards that and what we, and we actually saved it in electrical cost the following year until we're all done. And then we just paid for electric service, so.
Right, because you can see the difference right here on, on this sheet of the cost difference between high pressure sodium and metal halide and LED. Because the LED uses significantly less electricity.
And, and it was a, it was a better life. So I don't.
I, I see no reason not to move forward once we get the information we need.
I agree. Do we need a?
We'll, we'll wait until.
Yes, good for all of you. Yeah.
Since, excuse me, since this is an item on the agenda, could we allow the shippes to ask some questions if they have any?
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to come and thank you for considering this with all the other issues you have to deal with these days. I appreciate you considering this. I do feel strongly that it's a safety issue. Anyone coming from Manchester direction, it's very difficult to take that left, especially with the wind in the road that they now have put in. And now that there's a footpath there, it makes it even more dangerous for people walking, people turning, people flying up behind you when you've got your left blinker on and they're not noticing it. So I, I appreciate you considering this safety issue.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for putting you after me. Okay, let's move on to the discussion about bringing on a student from UConn School of Engineering to work on the Complete Streets program. Yes.
Um, so I think that's the piece of the puzzle we've been kind of going over amongst our health, for the non-students.
You want to come, I don't know. Can you hear her, Casey? Can you come up, pull through the owl so that our, this is where our microphone is, just so our person can hear you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So what Bike Walk Bolton did, because it's obviously bigger than just a couple of people, is we formed a Complete Streets Subcommittee. So this was six of us and we've committed ourselves to trying to make this work. And then obviously working with the town and finding out what is the best way to work with the town to get complete streets improvements in the. Um, and then obviously working with the town and finding out what is the best way to work with the town to get complete streets improvements in the town. Um, so I think Barbara went over, sorry, came in a few minutes late. Um, so where we're starting is to collect data in the library. Um, so over the next year, we wanna really collect data as to where residents wanna go, right by their foot, how they wanna get there and what's preventing them from doing so.
You want me to, I have the documents you sent me. I can share if you want. The documents you sent me, I can share them on the screen if you want.
Really?
Yeah, you're doing the survey right now?
Yeah, just discussing briefly, um, survey, this is about Sylvia, um, who, um, helped together. This is based a lot out of what, um, Andover did with the Andover Complete Streets. She had a very long conversation with Eric Anderson. How he did it and, um, and we're trying to duplicate a lot of what he did since it's very similar demographics to Bolton. So, um, this survey is currently in the library. We're urging everybody who can to go to a library, fill out the surveys, we can start collecting some data. Um, giving ourselves about a year to try to collect this data. Um, it's also a, um, a large, this is a couple of pages, I don't know if you, I wasn't gonna go through it all. It is in the library if everybody wants to. Now, they have their safety desk. If you can fill it out. But, I mean, in short, it just says where you live, where you wanna go. How you wanna get there and what prevents you from doing so. That's what this is gonna collect to help us figure out how to make improvements and where to do, where to do that. Um, there's also a large, uh, map in the library called the heat map where you can put a sticker where you live. It's, it looks like this, but it's a large one on the wall. Um, by the display and you can put a sticker and then you can draw an arrow from where you live to where you wanna go. So again, that's to help us collect some data as to where the, um, points are that people really wanna. Um, I also have everything printed out in here too for the, for the boards, so you have that here as well.
Can I ask you a question on the survey? So now, you know, I'm, I'm the younger generation, right? And so my question is, are there plans to. Turn this into an electronic survey so that we can share it more widely?
We talk about, we don't know how to do that. We, we had texted amongst ourselves, we'd love to do that, was Harper did that, and that's kinda how I got this idea.
You can use Google Forms, it's really easy.
Well, then where do we, where does it go? Where does the data go?
Into a Google spreadsheet.
And put on what Bike Walk Bolton or town page or?
We could share it through the bulletin, we can share it through social media, you can. Post a QR code anywhere so people can just scan the code and take it. Now, the, the map thing wouldn't easily work. To my knowledge, but the rest of it should be easy peasy.
Okay.
So.
We're hoping also to get with Jim before to, but then the, uh, May came up in the bike safety, so we got that in there. But Jim, if you have any input for it, you know, then, uh, edit that.
Yeah, who's on your, who are the six people that are on your subcommittee?
I think she's just, I don't know. Us, myself, it's James Perkins, it's Sylvia Albu, um, Ellie and Bryce Anderson were both on here.
They should be able to figure it out. I'll talk to them. I know they don't use socials, but I'm sure they can use Google Drive, so I'll talk to Ellie and Bryce.
Sorry at all, so. I think it's a great idea. I simply don't know how to do it, but that, if we can collect data.
Yeah.
That is really just.
Cuz I don't think you'll get enough necessarily just keeping it a hard copy of the library then. With hard copies, which I recommend having as well, then you have to like compile it all and so it's a lot easier if you already have it in a spreadsheet.
Okay, yeah, if you wanna help us, I'm, that'd be absolutely wonderful. Ellie and Bryce are on here somewhere, so they should be listening too.
Oh, okay.
They should be on a Zoom. Um, okay, so then two other pieces would be funding sources. Obviously, we have to fund everything that we do. Um, if there's time, Ellie did find a Safe Streets for All US DOT grant. Which I did attach an email, so that should be in there. It's.
As the summary of it. Oh, the executive summary?
Yeah. This is time sensitive and we obviously need, um, sign up from the town to get this going. This is what she put together. Ellie, are you on here?
Yeah, she's on. Do you want me to speak to it very quickly?
Do we have time just to, to summarize the funding that she found?
You keep up the pace.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, just super high level, um, you might all be familiar with this. It's a US DOT grant. Um, there are, I tried to summarize it very, um, high level in this document, but basically. Um, you can apply for funds to develop a comprehensive safety action plan. Um, which could be a complete streets plan. Um, there are examples of, um, successful funding applications for this type of planning that have happened. Um, in some of our, uh, neighboring towns in Connecticut. Um, Canton, Connecticut was awarded funding to develop the Complete Streets and the Vision Zero Action Plan. Um, the COG has, um, uh, support available. They can help with. Um, you know, all sorts of aspects around this. Um, there is a matching fund requirement. Um, but volunteer time spent as part of a task force. Um, directly engaging oversight of the development of the action plan would count, so I believe that that means that like. Bike Walk Bolton or some sort of subcommittee could be formed, um, and that would, um, meet the eligibility requirements for the matching fund. Um, as Tim mentioned, it is.
Ellie, can you just repeat your name and your address for this clerk?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ellie King, Ellie King, one four nine Brandy Street.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No, thank you. Um, it is a little bit time sensitive. Um, the applications are due June twenty-sixth. So we know it, it is a large ask because it would have to be, um, the town would have to be the primary applicant, um. And that is a bit of a time crunch, but you have a pool of willing and very motivated volunteers here to help. Um, so we just ask that you consider this, um, and you know, if, as a possible next step, we'd love to. Meet with, you know, maybe a subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen to talk about this more in detail, if it's something you think you might be interested in. Um, you know, we, we'd love to have a further conversation about it. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and, and that's part of the. The Complete Streets, the UConn Student of Engineering?
So, of our puzzle, is obviously a big puzzle, a piece of our puzzle, um, somebody at one of our Bike Walk Bolton meetings has suggested. Um, hey, then we have a whole engineering department at UConn who can maybe come out and help do some of these surveys. So, um, Sylvia, Barbara and myself met up with Wei Zhang, who is the, um, administrator with the professor up there. Who helps with the student senior projects at the end of the year that does provide these types of engineering projects. Um, again, I put this in the binder.
It's on the screen.
What's that? Yep, so that is the application. Um, so some of the key takeaways from our meeting is there would be no cost to the town. If you look on the bottom, it says there is a cost, but he did tell us if it's a town project, there is no cost as well. So we like that. Um, the town will need to provide one hour a week of engineering supervision and support to the student. We don't know if that is a barrier, cuz my understanding is we don't have a full-time engineer on staff. So, that's, yeah.
Doesn't have to be the town engineer.
Okay.
We have done successful projects with the UConn School of Engineering, a, a, a couple of them. And that it has been Patrice Carson and myself that have been the team leaders here. On the side of, on the town, town of Bolton side. You know, if we were to decide to, to move forward. With, with an application to the UConn School of Engineering, just wanna be clear that there's no guarantee that they would accept our project, right?
Right.
Cuz what, what happens is we put, typically when we do this, we give them two or three projects. And the students decide whether or not it's a project that they want to do. They get to sort of bid on those projects. Uh, we've successfully had a couple of projects, uh, we've gotten some really good outcomes. And you're absolutely correct, it, it, if, if they accept the project, because it's municipality, it's at no cost.
Yeah, I mean, it was a lot more powerful than that. I'm still, I'm leaving it at that.
Well, we've done it before.
You've done, yeah, I, we just started with Wei Zhang and he said the exact same thing that you said. So there's, yeah, one hour's required. Um, they also need just, I'm sure you already know the, the maps, which draws the dimensions where the work is needed. They don't, you need to know where to do the work. So we need the maps to do that. Um, the timeline to submit it is, um, July. So we think for our purposes, this is not gonna happen for this academic year. This would happen for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven year because we don't have the data to know where to ask them for engineering surveys. So I think we gave ourselves about a year to try to put some data together. Um, and then once the year's up, they can, they can shoot for July twenty twenty-six. If we agree that's something that we wanna pursue and do this application. And that's, was the other thought that, that we could, that wanted them to help with the Complete Streets plan? Work on that or not? Well, yeah, that's, we need to know where we want the importance to be. And then we can maybe ask them if they'd be willing to, we can do an application, right, to. To, uh, see about the possibility for a student to accept it.
Was it, there's something with the CROG that will be done in a year?
So, so, so we, you know, for everybody's information, uh, Patrice Carson, our Director of Community Development, myself. And Rodney Fornier, based on our conversations with Bike Walk Bolton, did have a meeting with, uh. Elizabeth Sanderson from the Capital Region Council of Governments. And something of interest, right, for Bike Walk Bolton and anybody else who might be interested in this. Is that, you know, we, we, we are aware of the SS four A grant opportunity. But we would have to define a project before we could apply for a grant, um. And the other, the other thing is, you know.
What's the SS four A?
The Safe Streets for All. They call it, they, they've shortened it by saying SS four A. That's correct.
Okay.
It's the same one you just showed us. So we're, we're absolutely aware of that, but right now, we don't have a scope of a project that we would. Being applying for a grant for, so I mean, that would be something that, you know, we would have to determine. If, you know, if the board wants to move forward with a grant opportunity. Uh, Capital Region Council of Governments has also included Bolton in several studies, right? Right now, they've got one that was completed originally in twenty nineteen and they, and they updated it in twenty twenty-three. And that's the Regional Safety Plan. And this is all part of the Vision Zero goal through the Capital Region Council of Governments. Um, and they are actually working on a project for, with the Vision Zero. Uh, under the Safe Streets for All Grant that they have received. And that is gonna be completed in late summer. And Bolton is included in their Vision Zero Safe Streets for All Grant Application as one of their towns. And the other project that they're working on is Priority Pathways. That one will be about a year and a half. Uh, before it's completed. Uh, and our Director of Community Development does, it does sit on both the Vision Zero and the Priority Pathways. Um, committees with the Capital Region Council of Governments, so Bolton is an active participant. Um, the other thing is they are going to be. And very much like you to collect data, they are planning, uh, to be at a pop-up event in the town of Bolton. Uh, with regard to collecting data for their priority pathways.
Actually, I attended that Zoom meeting on the twenty-ninth, um, with the CROG, um, Bike Walk Pedestrian Subcommittee. And it was a wonderful meeting and they had, um, interactive survey where they would propose a question and then you can log onto a website, you can get real-time data. Um, and then they exactly said that, but then during the event.
And that, and, and the, and the link to that survey was actually in the last regular Bolton bulletin. And it's still there if anybody wants to, you know, grab onto that link and. You know, be a part of it, or you can find it on the Capital Region Council of Governments. Um, so those are things that are already happening that, you know. Bike Walk Bolton and others may not be aware of that Bolton is actively engaged in with the Capital Region Council of Governments.
I think that's why they rate it, our subcommittee for, with maybe a subcommittee, um, of, of the board. So we don't duplicate the work and we're just move forward, not backwards and duplicate anything. So we could, we'd ask for consideration. To make that happen, so we use everyone's time wisely.
Is it okay if I just say something very quickly? This is Ellie King again.
Yep.
Yeah, I, thank you so much for all that information. And I think just quickly, um, with regards to the Safe Streets for All Grant. I think our, our idea was that we would use, we could use as a project, the development of a Bolton-specific Complete Streets Plan. And my understanding at least of how the funding works is that you could use components of existing regional plans to sort of develop your own. So that, I think, ties in very nicely with what, all the things that you were just talking about. Um, and could be like our, that was one of our ideas for a potential project. Thanks.
My, my, my recollection is that it's a minimum of a hundred thousand dollar project and it's twenty percent match.
Yep.
Oh, wow.
Does it have to be a financial match or is it gonna be volunteer work in kind for it?
It, it, some, some in kind might work. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent certain. I haven't delved that deeply into the grant application.
You can use, um, volunteer time. Um, it's on, I believe there's something about the match eligibility on that executive summary that we provided.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
So Jim, how, how does one typically identify a project that you'd like to do? You, I think you said we didn't have anything in mind for this grant specifically. I guess it would be widening a road in one place or. Putting up a speed indicator, I don't know.
Creating a plan.
Complete Streets is, is, is a typically, it, it defines a plan.
That's a policy, right?
Well, I mean, I, I actually have a little board here that I could share with you.
Okay.
Complete Streets are often realized through policies and infrastructure standards and requirements. Based on the premise that not all people want or are able to travel by car. And that streets should therefore be designed to accommodate non-motorist pedestrians, bicyclists and public transportation. It can also include street calming like trees, planters, benches and lighting. And there is a link on Capital Region Council of Governments webpage to, to their Complete Streets policy.
Safe Streets for All is different.
Similar, similar, but different.
But different.
But it doesn't mean that you can't use a safe.
And UConn students, the third thing.
Right, right. It doesn't mean that you can't use a Safe Streets for All Grant.
Right.
To complete a Complete Streets Plan for the town.
So I think the tricky thing, we have, we ha, I mean, Bike Walk Bolton could pull together. A scope potentially for what would be involved in developing a Complete Streets Plan. The challenge is developing the budget. I think.
I don't think anyone's asking my opinion on this, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Um, the, the term policy kinda is a little bit iffy because there might be unforeseen requirements later on down the road that. I don't know, cost the town a heck of a lot of money for something that we didn't necessarily foresee. However. If doing that planning can identify specific projects that could be useful, then that I think has a big value. And if we can get grants for identifying the projects that could be most effective and getting data for making things safer. No one would be against that, but I'm just, the unforeseen policy issue, I think is something that I wouldn't be comfortable with.
Uh, thank you for saying that, cuz that's, that, that's my thought, that it, you, I think you're, you're jumping from here to here. Well, filling in here and in the fill-in is, you really have to develop, I think, the key is, a- as you say, what. Identify what it is, where it is, and how you might wanna deal before you even come forward with a plan to deal with it, because.
Well, that's what we would be getting the money for. We would be getting the money to spend for their time to develop a plan, to do that research.
Right.
To pull it all together. We wouldn't be paying, we wouldn't be using the grant for implementation of a plan that doesn't currently exist. It's a planning grant.
Which is a planning grant, that's.
We would be applying to it as a planning grant. To get the answers to all these questions you guys are identifying.
No harm in coming up with projects, I mean, to make things safer, but I just don't wanna get locked into.
I mean, in theory, right, like, it could, we could, it could pay for some of Patrice's time to provide supervision to a potential intern, right? It could pay for whatever printing is necessary, whatever survey analysis is necessary, volunteer, I mean, you can volunteer time, but there may also be. Printing costs, right, to distribute things or whatever. I mean, there's, I, I think the hardest part of fleshing this out in the short period of time is, is. Figuring out how to build a hundred thousand dollar budget for the planning project.
So typically what we've seen, you know, with CROG's examples, and you know, I think Ellie, you've spent a little more. Time looking at this than I have perhaps, is that what happens when, you know, a Safe Streets for All Grant is applied for. The generated Complete Streets Program, typically they are hiring consultants that actually. Create the plan. And I think where Bike Walk Bolton is potentially saying, here we can help. Is that when the consultant wants to collect data, you know, or get surveys done. You know, they're out there on the trails and in the parks and on the hiking paths and they can collect data from people. That they meet out in those venues and, and their time can be counted. Toward the match as long as it's documented appropriately. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, so do you think that in order to apply for this grant, we would need to have a consultant selected, or do you think? We could say that we would go out to bid for? Or do you think we could say that we would go out to bid for a consultant?
Correct. Typically, you have to have a budget, but, you know, there, in a, in, in our conversation with, with Liz and Rodney, you were there, so jump in if I miss something, you know. Typically, what you do is you reach out to one of these consultants that's done a project for a similar-sized town and say, hey, how much do you think it's going to cost for Bolton? And that's where you come up with your grant number. Um, and she did tell us that there were a couple of towns that applied for less than a hundred thousand dollars, I think in the eighty or ninety thousand dollar range. And they, they were accepted. Um, but, you know, the grant itself, you know, she did point out that the grant itself asks for a hundred thousand dollar minimum, but that, that's a lot, that's a lot of money to spend on a plan in a tiny, you know, tiny town.
Yeah, yeah. And it's not a detailed plan, obviously. This is a concept, isn't it?
Well, some, there are some, there certainly would be some details.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Recommendations, suggestions, obviously. For phase one, and then, you know, coming to identify the plan.
They wouldn't include, the thing that scares me, would it includes, they may have recommendation, but based on this recommendation costs one and a half million dollars. Is it, does it go into that depth or simply say, this recommendation would improve this process and not really get into the cost side of it?
I, I don't think it typically does not get into the cost side of it. And I would say, remember that, you know, just like every other consultant that the town has hired over time, I think the, you know, that in, in order to adopt the plan, the Board of Selectment actually has to vote to adopt the plan. So, you know, to your point, if it has, you know, policies, you, you've got to make a conscious decision whether or not you're adopting those policies. And if there are ideas, right, and, and this, this, this isn't going to happen without engagement with the community and the Board of Selectment. So, you know, if you do a project, it's going to include engagement. So I think you get to some degree, you, you get to drive the ship here as a group, working together for a common goal.
And you can ask the consultant to identify low-hanging fruit projects that would be cheaper, more affordable, easily done versus those that would, yeah, we'd have to set aside capital for, right? Like, that can be part of the scope of work that we outlined.
So the quirky part of the conversation we were having with Liz is, is with CROG, they're looking, they're looking at the, the five thousand foot level.
Right.
And the whole scope of things. And, and of course, they come up with the, the, the plan where all the accidents and everything's going, and it's, it's forty-four, six, and eighty-five. And we said, well, we're, we don't really want to get involved with trying to fix those because we, we'd have to get the state involved and do battle with them. And who's going to pay? So are we going to be taking our grants, putting it on state roads? How do you, how do you fight that battle? And, you know, if, if this plan could s- stay outside of that scope, I think maybe it might be a better choice. Uh, you know, I did go down Route Six, and there's a good path down there. There's, that path's pretty wide on the side.
Yeah, but cars are going seventy miles an hour.
And the reason it's wide is because it was spot to be wide, so that they, I mean, they did the, uh, lanes, you know, it wasn't always, um, that way.
So.
But you could guide, you could guide them or the street they want on.
So, you know, it's, it's, I think it's more of trying to figure out how to connect the, the trail system with streets or the town hall with the school or, or, you know, things like that. I don't think it's, it's going to have anything to do with it. A hundred grand's not going to get you anywhere. Well, it'll get somewhere, but it's not going to do anything with Route Six, Forty-four, Eighty-five. So.
The barriers, um, felt that we needed to town is, there's major state roads that kind of divide the town. And they're dividing many areas. They also divide the residents. People that are north of the town, like we do, we cannot get to the front of town enough. It's not feasible. So you'd love to be able to do that. It involves a state. So would there be any possibility of maybe trying to work with the state so we can put the town back together instead of a north-south town?
Sure. You know, you bring up, you, you bring up something that we've been working on for the last fifteen, twenty years. I mean, no, no, I don't mean, I'm not saying it's in, to, to denigrate anything you're saying.
Yeah.
But, but that doesn't mean we aren't actively working on it now. And, and, but the key element to what you say is, what, what is it that divides us? Three eighty-four, six. That's, that's the major division. And what is, and what is the real bottleneck in the killer, the intersection? You're talking.
And they're state roads.
And we have been, gone around and around and around, um, even, we even had studies that showed potential me- uh, methods of, of dealing with it, which we gave, and was part of that process. CROG still has that, right? Jim's still sitting there.
They still have it. Don't for, and don't forget, you have a, you created a plan for a shovel-ready project for a bike lane along Route Forty-four, right?
Which, which we, we've all done that, yet the, the realization is, um, you have certain sections of the state with a lot more political power than we do, and the money's going there. I mean, maybe eventually, you know, this, enough happens and enough bad things happen here that, that they may decide that, okay, we really have to deal with this. That doesn't mean we can't keep the pressure on. We have, I mean, this is, this is an ongoing thing. This is something that every board from, that's been on here, has, has been there, met with them, continually meet with them, even when they had this pile of money. So they look, well, they look to different areas, and probably areas that, with, with a uh, higher population there to the higher traffic flow. Those, those things, or, you know, I get more votes from them than I get from here.
We've been the poor cousin.
Yes.
In this, uh, wrapped around three, four, six, and forty-four. And the state will not do anything unless there's another secondary reason. As Barbara remembers this discussion, we, you know, we tried to get forty-four plan going, only if they're about to do something else on forty-four. They're not going to do as a supplement. But that's their, you know, we tried trails money and those types of experiences. Sylvia knows all about this. Um, it's an uphill swim, and Bob's exactly right. It's with a little fish in the pond. And I've been working since nineteen ninety-four on the interstate. I've gotten a few bruises on my shins for my work.
Amanda.
Of course, of putting clankings out of there.
So I said this last time, and I'm going to say it again. We know there's barriers. We know there's challenges. That does not need to prevent us from doing what we can do. So there are other roads that have been identified that residents would like us to work on. We can put a plan in place for them, understanding that there may be bigger projects that are identified that we will keep on working on and a parallel path that may be more challenging. But I think that we have an opportunity with us right now. We have willing and active residents who are willing to help us with this. And it behooves us to identify those low-hanging fruit projects, things that we could do to improve other parts of town that we do have more control over, and start there, and maybe it spurns a movement, right? Like, I think that the, the state needs to see that we're actively trying to do something as well, and I, I, I think it behooves us to try and move forward with something.
That's why.
When there are grants, when there is money available for the supporting funds that we have to put forward, and it's always in conflict and battle with what's on the rest of the capital projects, they're two free of dollars. And it's, it's.
We, we can use volunteer hours for magic with this.
But we're on, are we planning for a planning grant or for action? All right. I thought you just said we already identified projects.
No, if we already.
No, we've identified areas of town that we'd improve.
So where I, where I was going with my comments is,
Say, why do we need the?
We, if we go forward, if you want to go forward with this, I think it's imperative that you concentrate on our local roads more than the main highways. Because, yeah, you, you, obviously, you, you can identify that that's an issue and this is that, but the solutions, and like you say, long hang, long hanging fruit is not going to be on a state highway. It's going to be on one of our local, local streets.
So we got Bryce with his hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Rodney. Um, yeah, Bryce Aronson, one forty-nine Brandy Street. I've been listening here with Ellie, and I think it's just the conversation, and as we work to get a better understanding of what we're asking for, I think it's just really telling that there is a need, and, you know, especially for the planning, this planning grant to speak for itself, to, that we coordinate with the consultants, and we coordinate, you know, in consultation with other town members, to have a communication, to have a conversation, to identify the issues, and to not go in there prescriptively to say that these are, are, are not the issues. So, I mean, I think, I think everyone recognizes that, and I think that it's very clear that there are going to be barriers for some of the bigger things. But to, you know, with the support of the Board of Selectment to move forward with this planning grant, we could then have a really good idea on what needs to be done. And, you know, and that's, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Uh, is there anything else?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to suggest, so, so we don't leave it hanging, that Jim, if you could contact the subcommittee and give them some dates when you could meet with them, because without you and, and the board or, or Patrice, you know, we, we can't really do anything. We're here to help. Um, so if you could give them some dates that they could meet with you?
Sure, I'm not, I'm sure I have the contact information for all the committees, so if somebody could share that with me, that would be helpful. I, I guess my, my question, so I, it seems clear to me that Bike Walk Bolton at this time has decided that asking us to apply for a project with the Yukon School of Engineering is probably out until you collect more data. Okay? But what you are asking is that we consider applying for the Safe Streets For All Grant. But I guess what I haven't heard, and maybe this is where we need to meet and get, get together in the short term, is I haven't heard what a clear project scope would be for the grant. Am I incorrect in that? You have some ideas, but don't really have a clear view of where you want to go with the grant yet?
Getting clear as we discuss it with you. So we're going to focus on local roads versus state roads. I know there's roads Bryce and Ellie live on Brandy Street. They're concerned about walking down that road. That's where the high school is. My son's going to be in the high school next year. I'm concerned about him walking on that road. There's a lot of kids who live over there, and I know they walk and they ride down that road, and people fly down that road. So, and that's a local road. Our road, Vernon Road, where we live, um, is a local road. It's treated as a highway. So there's local roads that we can identify, that we can put from that on, that I think is feasible to start.
I mean, I, a planning grant is a planning grant, right? I, I mean, I see a scope, right? The scope is to create a complete strain, streets plan for Bolton, and part, the steps are hire a consultant to help work with us, collect, leverage Bike Walk Bolton to collect data from residents about areas to focus on. Ask the consultant to focus on those areas that are identified by residents to identify safety measures that could be integrated into a Complete Streets Plan. Present the plan to the Board of Selectmen for consideration. Create, ask the consultant to develop a five-year or whatever work plan. Like, I mean, I just, it doesn't seem very, I don't know what they're looking for, but it seems, maybe I'm oversimplifying, but.
I think they want you on their subcommittee.
I, I apply for grants.
Allows you to apply for grants. It might not otherwise, uh, be able to apply for. So.
To implement stuff.
Yeah.
Because you have the plan, it's easier once a grant comes on.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Uh, Bryce, go ahead. Or Ellie?
Hi, Ellie. Yes. Um, so I think Amanda nailed it, and the only thing that I would add is that eligible, um, activities that they fund through this planning grant include things like traffic studies, doing community outreach, things like that. Anything that would go into the development of, of a plan. Um, so I think that would sort of be our pitch, would be, let's use this funds to develop the Complete Streets type of plan that we have been talking about.
Okay, go ahead.
So I think the action that we can take tonight is to.
It wasn't action, it was only discussion.
Oh, is it? We, we can't actually take the? No, actually, no. Okay. So the action that we could take in the future, the next time it's on the agenda, would be to authorize to, to, to agree that the town of Bolton will be the, um, the applier of the, of this grant, even if it's mostly done, if the work is done by Bike Walk, Bike Walk Bolton. So I think all you're asking us to do is, is to be, just to, we're, we're the entity that actually has to sign, has to sign the, the Safe Streets, um, Safe Streets For All grant application.
You have so much expertise among you.
But, but I mean, that's what, that's what you need us for, because you can't do this on your own. You need the, okay, so you need the town of Bolton, Board of Selectmen to say, yes, you can, okay, so that's what you want us to do. So that could be on, on another agenda. And, um, I just want to make sure that the, that the, the twenty percent match can all be done by volunteer, um, in-kind services. Is that right? So.
Well, I don't know if we know that.
That's what the, that's what it indicated to me based on what I read. I'm happy to go back and read and confirm that, though. Yeah, and so what would?
That's pretty critical.
Yeah, what would be needed was a budget for volunteer time that totals up to twenty percent of whatever the total budget is, so. Um, yeah.
And this is June twenty-sixth, and just a reminder, this particular deadline is June twenty-sixth.
So we would have to have this on an agenda, and maybe soon, or in a, in a couple.
We have a, we have a, a DP, AP meeting on May twentieth.
So we'll put this back on the agenda for, for, to act on, but we need quite a bit of information first, right?
I, I think it's a, you know, we, we need, you know, I think that, you know, town staff will need to meet with some members of the Bike Walk Bolton Subcommittee and try to work together to generate a scope and generate a budget, and bring that back to the board.
And, and if the twenty percent match is going to be in kind, I would almost recommend we go for maybe a million and a half, and we can have the town push for a bridge across Route Six, pedestrian bridge. Start racking up hours. Okay, is there anything else at the moment?
Just want to say thank you.
Thank.
Thank you. That was a lot of time. You so thank you all for your energy, your activities and efforts on behalf of safety in Bolton. Thank you. Everything printed out that, um, we put on the screen.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next, we want to submit for informational meeting on selectman salary. I'm just going to count it.
No, not, not me.
I thought you were talking about.
You're not, man.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes. Yes, please do. Yes, once you get to, right? Uh, all right, so we're on by C, um, informational public meetings. Do we have any other public meetings coming?
Tomorrow.
That we can.
Yeah, not, not that we can, not that we can put this.
So.
But you did it, you did it, you did it after an AP meeting the last time, right?
Was it after or before?
It was after the AP before the public hearing.
Yeah, we did it after the meeting.
But it just was, it was part of the.
Communication was.
It was part of the AP meeting. It actually wasn't a separate information session.
So we should go with the next AP meeting, which is.
I, I have a conflict that night, and I can't attend that meeting, and I would really like to be here for that discussion, so.
But we put it on the regular meeting?
In June, December?
Yeah, it's only a person and a half.
Thank you, everybody.
Keep it thin.
Yeah, a separate, it would be a separate information session, right? Not, and then, and then have it included in the agenda for the regular meeting.
It was separate last time. I just used the same link. They were, they were two separate.
Agenda for the informational session, and it was part of our discussion at the AP meeting, which led to confusion.
I agree with that statement.
Yeah, so it should be two, you know, there should be agenda, information session, then it should, that should end, and then the meeting should start, and that should be a line item in, in the, uh, in the meeting. It's just much clearer that way.
Because nothing says we have to act on it at that time.
Because nothing says we have to act on it at that time. So it is a very clear way of doing it. I concur with what Gwen said.
You're trying to do it on the on the third at six? Before the or as part of, I don't.
If a half an hour, if you think a half an hour is enough.
I don't, I don't think it will be.
No, and I don't think people can make earlier. That's my concern.
And we can't.
I don't, I don't vote on this.
And we can't make the regular meeting immediate immediately follow?
You could, but you set yourself up for a late.
You're setting yourself up for.
That's why I think it needs to be a separate night.
So.
I think after an AP meeting, you know, at a specific time or a separate meeting, I think that would give it the clarity that Gwen is asking.
So now we're into the seventeenth?
Yeah.
And there's no reason that we have to rush it.
That's the thing about it. So we we can move it out and make it so that it's, you know, easy for folks to come here and also easier for us to to be able to make it. Everybody can make it.
So that would be after the meeting?
Six thirty on the seventeen.
Yeah.
So the AP is at six?
Yep.
That's be so, okay. I'm getting good with that.
So you, that makes it you, it controls your AP agenda too. Can't keep adding stuff to it.
And is Tim working on the, there were, there were a couple of requests that came out of the last information session. One was to have to include the median salaries.
He has, I don't think he's done that yet because he's been busy working a budget.
Okay, but he knows that it's done as.
Let me ask what the main was.
He's almost done.
He's almost done.
We had the meeting. And now for D, we want to discuss the Herrick, the Heritage Farm pathway.
So, Chairman?
Submitted by Jacobson.
I would make a motion to be accepted. The current path has been proposed by Jacobson for the Heritage Farm trip.
Here a second. I'll second that with the comment, listening to all the discussion that was here the the other night, I think the vast majority concur with us on that plan, that that the better plan short term and long term. So I I feel, let's let's go ahead with that.
So we we did, we did get, you know, a couple of people that reached out to me, and I wanted to share this with you, that suggested that we reconsider where the pathway is on the side of the driveway and that we consider either the west side of the driveway or the west side of the house. In my, I've gone back with Joe Dillon, and he did say that if we were to, we we can't move it to the other side of the driveway. The grades are very similar, although it looks flatter, they're very similar. We can't achieve the five percent grade. And if we wanted to move to the other side of the house, that's probably going to require some survey work that we don't currently have.
There are two other reasons that I'd like to add to that, Mr. Rupert.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I I'm, I studied the situation and from the discussion, I apologize that I wasn't actually at the meeting, but I I did listen. If the suggestion to put it on the west side puts a path out of the sight of the parking lot, and that's a concern for me for vandalism, but it also brings the pathway around the front of the house and puts it in the closer to, I think, a more dangerous pedestrian situation where the the.
Driveway.
Where I'd rather have it much higher in the driveway.
Oh, so you do have to cross the driveway either way.
Yes, at the higher, the higher point where people have slowed down, they they're proceeding in and they're expecting to see pedestrians. So that's my reason for supporting it as well as the funding issue.
Okay, yes.
I am opposed to the current design, and I have no problem except from where it's between the barn and the road. And the the problem is that the big loop that juts out way into the eastern field, that was a new design element that was only presented to us two weeks ago or a week and a half ago. Yeah, yeah. A new design element, when when I walked with Joe and other residents, I think we had two public walks out there. That it was always, we always just walked down the side of the driveway and then turned down the road. Now, I know that I know there's this five percent issue, but then we were shown this design with this large with this large loop, which is, I I don't feel that that's acceptable. It's going to be visually very odd to see the path go way out like that and curve around. I have a feeling people might just say, I'm just going to cut down the driveway anyway and head to the road. I also think it might impede the historic, there's an envelope within which no digging or construction can be done.
It's not in that.
Okay, well, that that's good to know.
It is not in that. I did confirm that.
It's just, it it also impairs some of the, if if some of the hay operation goes goes up on that top of the hill. It's just not a, when you, it it's not an aesthetically appealing curve. It's it's too, it's it's too much out in in the field. And I I talked to Arlene Fiano, and she shares my my feeling. I don't want to speak for her because she's she's not here. But she doesn't agree with that, with that design either. So I just think that, I don't think that we want I know that we're driven by this five percent grade issue, but I don't think that we want to end up as a town with something that we're not going to like out there. That's an, that's an iconic property in in Bolton, and we don't want to have something where that something gets built and we say, eh, you know, that really just doesn't look that good out there. What, let's not let the let's not let the restriction of the five percent grade drive what we're going to end up with for the rest of our time here in Bolton. I think it's worth putting in more effort and more funding to do the survey work, to have it be, to to have it do a switchback in the the field that's on the west side of the house. I understand that the grade, when you're looking at the house on the grade right near the house on the west side is going to be very similar to the grade on the east side of the house, but if you move into that field and perhaps do switchbacks so that you can, that brings you all the way down to the bottom of the hill where you don't have to cross the high part of the driveway. That's, I think that's a possibility.
And how would you cross the driveway?
Um, you'd cross it closer to the road.
That's a very dangerous situation.
Well, I'm just saying, I think we need to keep working on this. I don't think we should just say, oh, fine, yep, you threw that there, you know, we oh, there's that big curve. Just go with that.
So what is our deadline to be able to put this? Because we don't have a financial deadline?
I don't know, I don't know what the financial deadline is, but, you know, we just filed a change of scope based on the selectman's action to, you know, truncate the path, you know, and not go all the way down Brandy Street. I I don't, I don't have the, I don't have the answer to, you know, what's our deadline. I know that Capital Region Council of Governments is is looking for us to submit our seventy percent plan very soon so that they can do that review. I know that one of our goals has also been to try to build this path in conjunction with the community septic system so that we're doing the least amount of disturbance on the farm as possible. We're going to cut, the plan is to run them sort of parallel together so that, you know, we're only getting in there sort of one time, and we're minimizing the disturbance. Anything else I can answer for you?
Gwen?
When we talk about deadlines, this project was approved before I was elected to the board. So I've been on the board probably eighteen months now, something like that. So when we talk about, we, I don't, I'm not going to buy the idea that we are under a dead not deadline now when this plan was approved that long ago. There have been pretty long gaps between when we see one design and we see another design. And I feel strongly that we need to take our time and we need to get this right. And we need to have something that everybody's going to be happy with out there. And I don't think that the townspeople are going to be happy with the design if it's built the way it is.
Amanda?
I have a question and a comment. One, the question is, are we allowed to stop the trail and restart the path, or stop the path and restart the path?
We ha- we haven't met with Crog, so I have not asked that question.
So like, could you stop it at the top of the parking lot, assume, and then start it again at the bottom and just allow people to get?
We addressed that last time.
Yeah, at the information session.
They they said we couldn't use the money to pave the driveway. They didn't necessarily say we could couldn't start and stop the path. That's what I.
I thought either Joe or you.
Joe, Joe answered that question.
I thought he said it had to be considered a continuous.
Continuous, okay, yeah.
And it has to be, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
It has to be ADA compliant the whole.
I get that, yeah, if we do.
Till we get to the road.
Then it can follow the grade of the road. My comment that I wanted to follow up with is that I would be opposed to making this decision tonight. Be, I understand it's a regular meeting and we can add items to the agenda, but I know this is one that the public is really invested in, and to make a act on this tonight when it wasn't posted on the agenda makes me nervous.
Yeah, I don't even know if the Heritage Farm Commission was aware that we were going to be discussing this tonight.
So they were all at the public meeting, you know, well.
Yeah, but they didn't know we were going to be.
When we were going to act on it.
Are there other comments? Oh, yeah, I mean, wh- why I'm in favor of it is what I like about Gwen, I mean, what I, and when you, when you go on the east side, you walk that ridge going down, that's probably one of the most spectacular views you had from that farm. In that, that's what I liked about that, quite honestly. What I liked about the way it curved out and it came down, and I think it really it 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 is one of the the premier views you have going out there. And 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 I I think, you know, we've looked at slopes and this and that, but also this, to me, that's that's the aesthetic side of it that I personally, I like. I'm not doing it just to be, you know, confrontational, but that's, that's, that's what I liked about that. Going on the other side of the house.
I don't think anybody would want to walk in.
That's going back.
Yeah.
That that area, that area, well, unfortunately, I guess I think back on how wet and and marshy that that west side of that house is, that that slow point down, that's that's a tough tough piece. I mean, I I obviously, I I haven't dug it.
They hay it.
Yeah, they they did, but it's it's a tough little, anyhow, but I I like, I I really like the way that is and the view that's there. That's why I like that one.
I I mean, maybe some thought should also be given. There was a lot of comment at that information session about how terrible the driveway is, and perhaps if there was some way to improve the driveway in connection with redesigning the path to make it fit at five to five percent. I mean, that could, you know, might, maybe the driver would have to be changed quite a bit to make it length the two, but I don't, I don't think any thought was was given to that. And I understand that the Crog funding is not going to pay for that driveway improvement, but I think that's something that should be looked at.
Tim?
I I like the path personally. I like the meandering part of it. There was a manure pit there recently, so that wasn't a good period. And that being said, so I'm fine with it. However, I'm not emotionally invested in the farm. I've spent zero time working on the farm. So if there's people that would be unhappy with an improvement to the farm that they really care about, then I wouldn't be comfortable voting in favor of the path, just to, just to put it in, you know what I mean? So again, I I like the path, but I don't think that I'm in a position to really, I don't think my opinion should matter that much because I don't have.
I'm not trying to push you. I'm not trying to push.
I'm not asking for anything new.
We're not asking for anything new?
Yeah.
No, the the motion was for the current.
The current, right, yes.
Something has been presented and we have before us.
Yeah, but it just sounds like people don't like it.
Well, there's, there's, you're never going to get everybody to like everything.
The third change we've made already.
So I did have concerns about the the path and and how it winds on the west side, east side, whatever, where it is right now in the plan. Where it winds, because I know that the manure pit was filled in and paved over, that the the business plan is ultimately to potentially put up a pavilion over there that would allow for weddings. And if I were someone looking at that space to rent it out for weddings, I wouldn't want random public walking up close to my party on the path right in front of it. And so I do think it could potentially impact the money-making revenue side of what the the long-term plan of the Heritage Farm.
I I wouldn't consider that an an issue because it's the town of Bolton's, and the people of Bolton should be able to go sit on that path and
If you have the same path on the other side of the building, it's.
It's similar to the people that didn't want a parking lot for a path because they liked enjoying the woods. That's very nice that you get to enjoy your private woods that we own, but, you know, this is a public place.
If I can speak to that point for just a moment, so, you know, if somebody, if we build a pavilion and we rent the pavilion, we're not closing the farm to anybody else. So anybody could be anywhere. Right? I mean, I think that's just important to remember.
Oh, yeah, I just, it it doesn't need to be right next to where the event space is. Like, it, the path where it is leads you right there as opposed to currently, when you go there, you don't see many people in that area, quite frankly. I I don't.
So I I performed five weddings at the farm so far. It is wedding venue. It's just outdoors. And if people get permission, they don't get permission, they come, and I have been interrupted twice. Oh, hi Pam Sawyer, and I'm like in the middle of performing a wedding. So, and we would have something to feel, we'd have to have some walkway in the back to have, if it, but it becomes an open venue for whatever the function is. I would this time, because I understand what you're saying, I under, but the what, the moving part is, for me, is not to change it, but the moving part is that people don't know that we are going to make this motion tonight. So at this time, Mr. Chairman, I will withdraw my motion and ask that be placed on the next meeting so that it can be posted, so others can come here and speak at public comment because that's how we we act as a board, listening to the public.
You mean another informational session or?
No, that we just.
Public comment, okay.
Meeting that would have public comments, that would be the June meeting, because we don't have public comment at the AP.
You you could. And if it's.
I withdraw my motion.
If it's an agenda item, they wouldn't talk about it during public comment. They would talk about it when you got disgusted on.
Not necessarily. We we close the comment between the board during the meeting, and that anyone who wishes to speak on it would speak on it during public comment.
So, and if you were drawing, drawing motion, obviously, you're drawing a second.
I I'm just going to say I would rather not wait until June, because it means that we can't make any further progress.
As I mentioned before, I'm not available for the May twentieth meeting, so I would ask you not to schedule it for that night since I.
That doesn't have public comment on it because it's an AP meeting. It's a special meeting.
But you can put public comments.
It's not a special meeting. AP meetings are no longer special meetings. They're a part of your regular.
Draw my comment.
So we're going to set up another meeting?
The agenda item? No, we're not setting up another meeting. It was an agenda item.
On the twentieth?
No, because Ms.
So what date are you talking?
Third of June.
We're running into serious time issues on this, because any change to this path is going to take us until.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to move it forward, that's all. I I don't, you know, I under, I understand the comments on both sides. I I truly do.
June twentieth it is.
I I have momentum right now with the engineering.
It's May twentieth.
June third.
Okay. It's under the Board of Selectmen, one of the meetings, there's a presentation.
So what did, was it, was a decision just made? June third?
We're going to make them. Do we need a motion?
No.
No?
Well, you can put it on the agenda.
Okay, and you said June third.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night.
Bye, guys.
Um, okay, moving out to six.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we accept the resignation with regrets for Tina Pryor for her outstanding service looking at the library.
Is there a second? Five seconds, any comments?
I've known her for a.
Sadler seconds.
Sadler seconds.
I've known her for a long time, many, many years, and and as, and through the library, and she's been. years and um and it's through the library and she's been outstanding.
Thank you, thank you, Ben. All in favor? Any other, oh, sorry, missed any other comments? Number seven, correspondence. We have a individual who's on the backside of this new stony road parking lot who is requesting that the town because it exposed a lot of his property, which he's been maintaining this time that the property's been vacated. And he's asking that we put plantings in, I think Gwen can speak on this, did you meet with him?
Yes, I did. Brent Merson, Mary Turkeyman and I were out there on Saturday. I happened to look at the packet Friday, thankfully, because I saw his email which came in on the twenty-third, and so I contacted him on Friday and told him that we were gonna be out there Saturday morning to start blazing, marking that trail. And I I said it would be great to meet you and talk, talk about your concerns, so he was there, we had a great conversation, nice, nice person, very reasonable. His concern is that when you, when you pull into the parking area and stop, there there's a lot of wood chips, and then he thinks that he's concerned that people will continue and just walk straight to his house. His house is, I would say, three hundred feet or so from the edge of where the wood chips are. So between the wood chips and his house, about three hundred feet, and it's it's um pretty, pretty wooded in there, but he still felt that because it is more open that people might think that's where the trail goes. And um so I, so he, we, we both, all of us walked back to to see where he mows and um he chatted about how he enjoys this property, this Nathan Hill property. And so I asked if he would be satisfied if we put some signs at the edge of the parking area with arrows saying trail that way. And he said, oh, yeah, that that would be good, and he said, I might plant some shrubs anyway. And I, we all said, I think that's fine too, and we don't know exactly where the line is, the boundary line between the town property and his property. But I think he seemed savvy enough so that he's going to make a pretty good guess and and of where he's gonna put those shrubs. Brent Merson offered to do some signs, that they're gonna be temporary signs, so I would hope that the town would come up with some more permanent signs at some point, but it'll just, they'll just be small signs on a stake, um pointing trail. And um then we, Mary and Brent and I started marking so that when you go out there, those photos that I showed you now have glazes on the trail going all the way up the hill. So with a sign that says trail and the blazes, it should be pretty clear that people should go that way and not straight on to Chris Lapenta's property, but um so we left it that that way.
Good solution.
Yeah, it was very, it was a very nice conversation.
Do we have to get any permission for Brent to be able to put signs up on town?
And these are really temporary signs too, you know, it's just gonna be a stake and a sign nailed to it, so it's not it's gonna be removable and replaceable very easily.
Well, seven B, well, thank you, letter from Lynn Sobel.
Family, Mr. Chairman, the family is very grateful for the efforts that he put on behalf of their family member.
Thank you.
Chairman, I would ask the board's consideration for us to move the approval of the minutes to the May twentieth meeting, if they would consider that, and if I see a number of nods or heads, I would make a motion table, but I need a consensus first. If it's not favorable.
Is there a second?
As long as they're not reprinted.
Then I would ask that if you please delete your minute in a file very carefully this time, and then we have it to be distributed second time.
I think we're good, everybody's telling.
Mr. Chairman. That we we threw eight A, B, C, and D until the May twentieth.
Is there a second? Five seconds, any other discussion?
There's no discussion.
Oh, okay. Motion.
You have to make a prayer, ask for a motion.
Motion passed. All in favor? Okay, we're sitting pretty. Reports and updates, consider an act on accounts payable.
Mr. Chairman, I would like a motion that we move on the accounts payable that has been presented from Morris to the total of eighty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety-six cents.
Um, is there any discussion? Yes.
Page eight. LaFrenble's Water Service, if I just would like some clarification as to uh what, I I see that there's a town, town fifty percent. So who pays for the other fifty percent and how often is that monitoring done?
The Board of Education, so this is a there, there is a shared well that sits behind the senior center and to the side of the Bolton Center School. And that water system provides water to the Bolton Center School, to the senior center complex, the CBC, the town garage, and the uh the uh buildings and grounds building, so it is a community's uh water source that is owned by the town and serves both the Board of Education and the town buildings. And we've had some repeated issues with power outages um that have impacted our water supply, we've actually had to send school home twice early. And we've had to send town staff home early twice uh because of power glitches and this project, what it did was give us another warning system so that we would know when the, because what's been happening is the power goes off, it trips a breaker, we don't know the breaker is out because power should be stored. And sometimes this happens like overnight or on the weekend and we just don't know about it. And it depletes the water in the water tank, and then all of a sudden we're out of water. And it takes hours to bring that water system back up online, and then we have to, then we have to um sanitize it. So this is a a project that was put together with the Board of Education and LaFrenble's is our certified water operator for that water system. That's a requirement by the state. And so they're the ones that helped us put this project together, and it's a uh it's basically, it's an additional warning system.
So this is a one-time?
It's a one-time expense.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that.
I'm sorry.
Mather Clark.
Thank you.
And on page fourteen um the United Concrete, all those catch basin tops, does, does each catch basin cost like thirty-three hundred dollars? So, yeah, and why there are some.
That's for three of them.
I did write this, yeah, yeah, right, they're about twelve hundred dollars a piece, I think.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mather, I missed that, okay, wow.
So these are the things where the water goes into the.
They they come, they come, you know, in this case, we ordered them from United Concrete, they come precast with the new grates on the top, and these specifically are for Luxway and Walden Way because we reclaimed the road. And we're gonna be repaving the road after the town hall parking lot gets paved.
Those are the only questions I have.
Any other questions? All in favor?
What's the dial on page ten, what's the dialer for the fire panel at the town hall?
So it basically, it's a cell phone that's in the fire alarm panel, and it needed to be replaced.
It does a phone.
We had to pay two thousand dollars for a cellphone?
It's, it's also the installation and interface with the fire alarm.
All right, it's it's a.
That's just the easiest way to explain what it does, Amanda. It doesn't look anything like the cellphone that's in your pocket, but that's essentially what it is.
All right, makes sense, thank you.
Is that it?
I think so.
All in favor? Like seven, yes, I believe there's one more.
Now it's payable, we have another one towards um for tax revenue for nine hundred sixty-four dollars and twenty-five cents, I make a motion that we prove.
I'll second.
All in favor? Do you want to discuss that? Yes, budget transfers.
We have one uh before, we have a couple before, so the first one, uh it's administration to land use is for nine thousand five hundred from the administration budget for the land use, for legal services to, from the category from legal services to the category of regular payroll.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, seven, yes. You don't notice, next.
We have another one for administrations, prepare for ten thousand dollars from administrations to land use again for from professional technical to payroll.
For ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars. Any, any other discussion on this one?
Well, on the second, oh, five seconds, any discussion?
All in favor? Seven, yes.
I believe we don't have to.
This one's informational, the eight hundred dollar one's informational, the two thousand dollar one's informational.
There's a three hundred dollar one that says needs our approval.
Hmm, yes, because it's, because it's between budgets, so I can't approve this one.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, that we transfer three hundred dollars for administration to the budget for ZBA from the professional technical to office and administrative services.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, seven, yes.
Oh, you did need to act on the eight hundred, we we do need to act on the eight hundred dollar one, because that one's between budgets as well, that's the that's the eight hundred dollars for the fire department.
The motion that we uh transfer eight hundred dollars to the administration to the fire commission for, and from the category of professional technical to the category of emergency fund.
Proficiency.
That's proficiency.
You two second it?
Sure, it's just proficiency.
Yeah, now I'll second it, okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
I'm voting no.
Uh, seven. Yes.
Cause I voted no on the budget.
No, six, yes, and one, no.
Did you get that, Casey?
The six hundred dollar one does not need to be done?
Nope.
Okay. That concludes our children's hearing, Jenny.
Uh, it's number ten, new business, considering act on Novus Bid Waiter. Yes.
I make a motion that the Board of Selectmen waives the bidding requirement for the Novus management support contract beginning July one, twenty twenty-five and ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. First year of the contract cost is six, sixty-seven thousand two hundred dollars, two dollars, sixty-seven thousand two dollars and eighty-four cents. The second year is seventy thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars, forty-four cents. And at the end of the third year of the contract is seventy-four thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars and four cents. And the reason is listed on your uh in your packet, uh if someone needs me to summarize, just let me know.
But.
I need a second.
Okay, that was Mather's second, any discussion? Yes.
It's a big contract not to go out to bid. And, you know, for a three-year contract, I get that we were very happy with them, like, uh, no, no one debates that, but occasionally it's good to go out to bid, so my hope is that, you know, because someone could provide the same level of service at a cheaper rate than what we are getting from Novus, right? And I know that we're in the middle of some projects and it may make make sense to stick with them now, but I would hope that, moving forward, you know, when these three years are up, that there will be a bid process to see what else is out there.
Mr. Chairman, I would concur.
Don't we have an ordinance that governs when uh the the dollar amounts, when we, when we can, which is, oh, we have to waive? Oh, I see, so the order, our ordinance allows waiver no matter how large the contract amounts are, okay.
That's why it's written the way it is.
Any other discussion?
So let me also, let me also state this, because I think this is important, it's written in the draft for your consideration is that they are on the state bid list, so the project the, these services have gone out to bid through the state of Connecticut, they've also gone out to bid through the Capitol Region Council of Governments. So Novus has submitted to competitive bidding, so it's not like we just pick somebody out of the, you know, out of the ethernet and and grab them, so I think it's important to just remember that, you know, that that they did, you know, go against and create a competitive bid, you know, through those two entities.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Um, and next is consider an act on signing off on the EMPG grant.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion. We have the appropriate authorities sign off on the grant.
For the ten thousand dollar grant?
Was that Gwen or Pam? Okay, thank you.
Yes, the total budget is.
If you would, if you look.
It's almost done with federal funding five and uh the matches.
So it's sort of, but to sign off on a total budget of ten thousand dollars.
Is there any?
Yeah, you're, the, the, so the grant is five thousand, right?
Right.
But you, you ma, you match in your in the emergency management budget, you match the other five thousand.
I would amend my motion then. To the, that the, to say that the total budget is ten thousand dollars with the match would be five thousand dollars.
A second? Mather, seconds, any discussion?
Tim just makes a good point that we are, the five thousand is is currently budgeted as it was in the past.
It's help pay for.
It helps pay for the cost of the emergency management director and other costs within the emergency management.
Budget, okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, that's unanimous, seven. And now county administrator reports. Which is
everybody has it, is there any questions? And then there's a couple other things that I didn't get on here that I'd like to chat with you about.
I have one question, on the, the pistol permit denial process, who is it that holds the hearing?
This, this, there's a board, there's a board at the state that holds those.
Which, which division?
Uh, Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection.
Okay.
They, they actually have a board that that convenes.
Okay, that can overrule a denial if they, if they so.
That's correct, or they can uphold.
Or they can uphold, either way.
Okay, did you get a, a ruling yet from them on this?
The, the individual that applied for um for for them to um cons- consider overruling the action that was taken by the town, did not show up. So they ruled in favor of the town of Bolton.
Okay. Thank you, and then my, my only other question is something that doesn't appear on here, which is, uh, there was an article recently about the sale of NIPS and how much money the state of Connecticut or towns in Connecticut are getting from the sale of NIPS, and I'm, I was wondering if you happen to know what Bolton is getting in revenue and and uh where, what we're using that money for.
I don't remember how much it is, but it's been enough to really almost a hundred percent pay for our street sweeping the last couple of years, that's what we've been using it for. It's a permissible, um, so we've actually been able to take that money out of our operating budget and use those NIP funds to almost a hundred percent pay for street sweeping. I, I wanna, I wanna. Yeah, it's, it's, it's somewhere in that. It's, it's around fifteen thousand a year, I think that's right.
Wow, and we show that as, as a separate line item on revenue coming in?
It do, it does show, yes. It do, it does show, yes, and it has to be kept separate and we have to report on how we've spent the money. Just an in- interesting factoid, you know, when I, when I, I thought it was a staggering amount of money for NIP bottles.
Yeah.
And we had conversations with some of our local liquor stores. A s- a slow day is six hundred NIPS a day.
Wow.
And that, and that's, and that's why there, you know, you.
Combined.
On the sizes.
Combined between all the liquor stores, right? Each?
Well, there's actually not that many of them, so.
That was one liquor.
The percentage is pretty low.
I have one that drops off every day at my yard.
It's a, it's a staggering amount.
That is staggering. Wow.
Well, it sounds like it's raining.
Oh.
Uh, well, let's hurry up and finish the meeting so we can go out and play in the rain.
Here's that last spot.
You said there was a couple other things you wanted.
Was, was there any other questions on the written?
Yes, I was just gonna ask one more, and that is the estimate for the finishing of the beautiful driveway that we're finally getting with the new. Walkway.
It's a, it's, it's gonna be right around a hundred thousand dollars, it's gonna.
Time, the time.
Oh, the, I thought you were talking about the price. Um, they are scheduled to come here on the twelfth to pave. Um, tomorrow, if the weather holds out and things dry out a tiny bit, they're gonna come back and do the final grading.
Doesn't need it? I'm just saying.
Yeah, it needs it. Um, and then, um, so they're, they're currently scheduled for the twelfth to come and pave. We asked that they pave here before, they pave Luxway because we don't want the paving to interfere with people being able to access the ballot box. Or the town clerk's office during the referendum. And if it gets too, if it gets too close, we're just making sure things are all set and, you know, maybe push them over to Luxway before they come here. But I think it will be the twelfth. I'm keeping my fingers crossed for good weather and that they didn't get backed up too much with other things this week.
Yes.
So the last bullet says you met with the town engineer regarding Vernon Road and Quarry Road. We believe the first step is to create a plan to make a three-way stop there. So we heard from concerned residents about the speeds on Vernon Road. But the board never really had a discussion following those comments to talk about what we thought. A solution might be, cause there were people that said they didn't think stop.
This would bring a plan forward to the board for our consideration, that's just.
It's one of the things I wanted to discuss a little more with the board tonight, I realize you, you know, probably not gonna make any decisions about it. Um, but you know, Joe Dillon and I did meet, you know, he was here for other things, we had a conversation about it. Um, and you know, what we came up with was creating a three-way stop sign there. And realigning the section of Vernon Road that's between Route forty-four and Quarry Road. And we, we truly believe that that.
Aligning it?
Realigning it, making it, right now, you've got a road that goes straight and you've got a road that comes in at a Y.
Correct.
Nobody needs to stop or slow down and they don't.
Correct.
Right, so.
It happened to me this weekend.
Right, and, and you're not the first person that's told me that. And that's why we believe one of the first steps would be to realign that intersection and put, make it a three-way stop.
It'd more, it'd be more of a T, more of a T.
It'd be more of a T instead of a Y.
So like a big project.
Um, I did ask for an estimate on the design part of it, which would require some engineering design and some. Um. Surveying work, and that estimate is around seven thousand dollars for the design phase. Which would come out of our normal operating budget and the administration budget. And from that, we could generate a cost estimate of what the project would cost. I think the project could largely, our, our staff has proven themselves very capable, I think our staff could probably do the project.
And who owns the land in between that Y? You know what I'm saying?
So we would essentially move it to the left a little bit, we, we think some people would gain yard, but I believe that's town and Bolton section. We, we couldn't encroach on anybody else's property.
Clip the right side of that.
It swings at an angle like this.
That's why there's a need for the surveying work to determine where the property lines are and if the intersection could be realigned. With, within the town's boundary.
I mean, I'm just thinking like, seven, seven thousand dollars of engineering time is a lot of money. And I think it may behoove us to like discuss this further before we authorize Joe to start working on it, but that was just my thinking.
So what would you think the options are?
I don't know, the, they, the, some of people who showed up here in the public said that they did not want a stop sign specifically. Um, that some wanted flashing lights, you know, or a slowdown mechanism, right? Like maybe a speed bump or something, like, I just. I think it behooves a more deliberate conversation about what other options may be before we just opt to spend a lot of money. On this, going this route, I'm not saying it's not the route.
So the, the other thing that we discussed is, again, on that section between uh, Quarry Road and Route forty-four. We, we talked about putting a type of speed bump in there that's really not super intrusive to clouds. Right, so we, we think, right, tabletop, I believe is what they're called. So, you know, the conversation we had is that the combination of those two things really should help the traffic. Speeds on that section of Vernon Road. The section of Vernon Road between Quarry Road and the town of Vernon becomes a much more challenging aspect. But that section, I, I think this is a very comprehensive plan that could solve the problems on that section of roadway.
And it does deal with us another problem, Vernon Road folks are the ones that are speaking here. The, the other problem is the Quarry Road, the speed on Quarry Road, it's.
Right.
It mean, it's fifty, sixty mile, it, they can fly.
Oh, yeah, that's not the speed limit, yeah.
That's, and that, and the only way to, really, little, the only way to correct that is. Is, is, is a three-way stop, and I hate stop signs, but all the years, there's been, we've had a few. One of the most effective one was when we, we, we put the four-way stop down on uh, Route eighty-five. We forced the state where, where the bike, where bike trail is, where the exit is off of three eighty-four and eighty-five. It is, it, it's, it's effective, it has made a huge difference. And that road, I mean, you, you've got that many residents on Quarry Road, but you ask any one of them and they. They come flying down from Vernon. Or like. Come the other way, and, and, and that intersection without those stops, it's, you, you really. Even if you tee it off, you still, still have that issue of high, high end vehicles coming down. If everybody stops, there's a stop, everyone can turn safely.
I mean, I would be.
Make people go faster.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would ask, and it's an unusual ask, because this is the administrative report that you hold the board. Just poll the board and look for a consensus for this to continue to move forward because of the expense.
Well, can I say something before we poll?
Okay, yeah.
I would be, given that this was brought to us by the public and we are responding to the public, before we invest seven grand in a full-blown plan. I, I think this should go on a regular agenda as an agenda item to give people. A chance to provide feedback before we invest more money in this option.
But my goal by having the discussion was simply to have the discussion tonight. I want, I want all of you to be thinking about this, and I, and I would make one, I would make one more comment. And again, if we wanna have this on the agenda, we could, you know, if you wanted, we could try to have Joe here to answer some of the more technical questions. But the, the reason that we're talking about a three-way stop and not a single stop sign and realignment is so that. Somebody who's on that section of Vernon Road, if we just put a stop sign there and realign the road. This gives them a safer opportunity to be able to get out and turn and.
Oh, right, right, yeah, a, and, and I'm not opposed to the design, I just don't want us to invest a lot of time and energy. And then have a lot of angry public come, and I think, again, we've been chastised a bit for our communication with the public, so I'm all for more communication. I know it delays things slightly, but I think.
There's no.
Putting it on a, huh? Right, I think putting it on.
I wanna just, I'm, again, I wanted to know, I wanted you to know that we're working on this.
So I guess I'm just saying.
Brainstorming ideas, sure.
So I, I would think that maybe a couple tabletops on the Vernon Road part. And then a stop sign at the top of Quarry and a no left turn sign at, at the hill.
That's why we should have, that's why we should have Joe here, he's our, he's our expert.
Right, right.
And that way you can, you know, if we wanna discuss these things, you can discuss them and he can respond.
Yep.
I get back to my question.
I, yes.
Will you poll the board and see the decisions to be.
To be made.
Whether we bring it forward to the next meeting so that you have some.
You need a public here, public comment?
Just put it on.
Just be an agenda.
Okay, is there anybody who thinks it should be an agenda item at this point? Just make it an agenda.
And the other, the other thing, just really quickly, I wanted to report to you that we continue to engage Eversource with regard to Colonial Road. Uh, and I just, I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot to put it on the report. But I did have Don Bucimovich reach out to Julian, who is the um, tree warden for Eversource. Again, he actually asked, asked him to call in Monday, so we had fresh information. And Julian said he's been out there, he's been looking at it, they have the crawler available, it's just, it's too wet. They can't get in there because it's too wet. So I wanted everybody to know, including the public, that it hasn't fallen off our radar, we continue to work on this. And try to move the project forward so we can get that wrapped up.
Oh, I'm sorry. And before we move to the last item. Well, Mr. Chairman, I just ask that everyone that's behind him will make a careful file of them so that he can have them for the next thing.
And one last thing, Memorial Day is uh, rather early this year, twenty-sixth. And the board is invited to participate, you can walk or ride. We have uh, fire department, Department of Fire Department, so.
So unless the town hall is gonna be open on that day where I have access to a restroom, I won't be joining. Transparently speaking.
We'll have to buy the ride for you if you want it.
My life, you think.
We did have our, our, our Ethics Commission meeting this afternoon.
First, first one ever, right?
Uh, no, not ever.
The newer commission.
They have methods, first time they've had an, an items.
Yep.
They've had training.
So now we can move forward.
Make a, make a motion that we move on action on number twelve to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Good night, everybody.